Toilet paper, so.
It's because of coronavirus, everybody's.
I know. Which I use on a fairly regular basis.
Me, I do too.
Yeah, we'll call this meeting to order. We're session Wednesday, March fourth, at nine P. M. I'm gonna start reading the twelve principles we know by. I will read them by and it's consistent with this. Number one, I am a city counselor and advocate of quality and effective city services. I will do what I can promote cost-sensitive and professional services to St. Helens visitors. I will create an active environment for business and family. Number two, it is my responsibility to contribute to a stabilized environment for the city. I am a fighter of uproar, detention, and conflict. I believe in cooperation. Number three, I believe in routine. The greatest gift I can give the city residents is to provide services that are predictable. Number four, every comment I make, every vote I cast will be motivated by the question, what is good for the city residents and visitors? Number five, what I want for my own family is what I want for all patrons of the city. Number six, I will champion the city. I will compliment and reinforce often. I will suggest and recommend when necessary. Number seven, I will support a majority position of the council. I may not agree, but once a vote is taken, I am with the others. Number eight, I will never come to a council meeting having made an agreement between individual or group. Number nine, at all times, I will remember I'm a city official whose purpose is to serve and represent others to act on their behalf. Number ten, courtesy is a rule. I will not break that rule. Number eleven, a council meeting is a business meeting. It is not entertainment. It is not social hour. It is not question and answer session. It is a business meeting. Number twelve, I am busy. Council members are busy. The staff, administration are busy. Everyone is busy. At this meeting, I will do what I have to do. I will do it as fast as possible, and I will respect the time of other people. Okay, now that being read, now I'm gonna open it up for visitor comments.
Hi, Patrick Berkeley. I think I disappointed you all when I didn't speak at the last one, so I felt I better come up with a list of, you know, a list of things. No, first of all, I just wanna say I, kudos to Jenny Dimsho with the Planning Department, Public Works Department, on their work on the new Fifth Street Trail. I joined her, along with Howard and Caroline, and Crystal and Bush from the Soil and Water Conservation District, to do a walk of the new trail. Some great work's been done by the Columbia River Youth Corps. And the purpose of the walk was to make sure that we, that in future, when the Knob, Friends of Knob Hill Park, and others do their volunteer work there, that we're very sensitive to the rights of the private property owners whose land is in back of that, that trail. And I, and kudos, of course, to the city, city staff for being very sensitive about those concerns, because I understand this is kind of a pilot project. Let's see if there might be future development of this trail and another trail. So anyway, it was just a really, really good thing. So if you yourselves haven't had a chance to get out there yet, please do. Today's a beautiful day to do it between your meetings, maybe if you have a chance. Just a couple of brief, it's kind of a real brief list, not a long shopping list, but just responding to some things I have seen in the news and some of the minutes and things about some developments, such as the riverfront development and the talks with, if I'm pronouncing it right, Tacola. And I understand that tomorrow, some of you may be heading down to Independence to find out about their experience, is just trying to keep an awareness that waterfront development is done, and especially with the input of housing. I think I like the idea of the multi-use building where you have businesses on one level, and then above that residential units. But I would be concerned about the number of stories. I think there's been some talk or discussion about possibility, three to four stories. And just my own personal opinion from a number of things, and actually developments I've seen like that down in Hillsboro, I was in Pasadena this past weekend, and seeing similar developments, just the footprint that a taller building can have, especially if we have increased residents, that might impact the access to and from that area, impacts on parking and things like that. So I'm very supportive of that kind of mixed use of building, but hope that in the discussions there's some real careful looking at just, you know, the height of that and being aware of, even though there will be straight, street improvements to and from that area, just being very aware of potential impact through increased traffic, congestion, that sort of thing. I also did see that there was an initial proposal, I think it was last month, about a potential RV park down by the rec center along Milton Creek. Again, looks like a really good idea. I know, I understand that nothing, this is kind of preliminary ideas, and just my perception as I was, as I was looking at the proposed design by the consultant, it looks like some of the RV spaces were right up against the creek. And I would think in terms of any design, and if you're talking, we're looking at wanting to have public, continued public access to the creek and development of trails, that to try to ensure that there be some kind of buffer, so that those trailer spaces don't come right up to the creek, and allowing some kind of space that would allow perhaps for, you know, just the public along, to walk along the creek, and I guess also to avoid any potential pollution or contaminants through construction or whatever, that kind of thing. Again, I know the city is always gonna be very careful and aware to make sure that those things are followed, but that's just my point of view. I, the idea of an RV park down there looks, looks like it'd be a good spot, but in the design, keep in mind access to the creek. And last, has to do with, and this is, I know this, budget season is coming up, and we're always strapped for funds, but this is related to the also trail and parks development. And I did mention this at one of the city Parks and Trails Commissions meetings, that I think it would be useful for the city to develop some kind of plan or process for the control of invasive species and noxious weeds in the city. And I did do some research, and I forgot to bring it with me, that according to Oregon Revised Statutes, there are some statutes that do address the responsibility of cities to control and even eliminate as much as possible of noxious species and invasive species. So I think just in terms of planning, again, I know funds are short, personnel are short, but at least in a small way to begin looking at a concrete plan to, to control and remove things such as the, I guess they're not officially Himalayan blackberries, they're Armenian blackberries, the Scotch broom, English ivy and English holly. So, that again is just maybe, again, plant a seed with you all to think about that, or encourage the Parks and Trails Commission or folks to look at, what is, first steps we can do to look at what the issue is here in the city, and as the city develops, what are ways that we can control and contain and eliminate as much as possible those noxious invasive plants? Thanks.
So I know Paul was working with Tip Hubel. Paul, that would, was actually on to the response to noxious weeds. So when we are notified, we eradicate, so. Charlotte? Could you state your name for the record please?
Yep. I'm Shawna Strupp Harrison, and I wanted to get an update in regards to where we're at with the lagoon. I know that there was a study being done, so I was just wanting to hear what the update was in regards to the lagoon.
I think we're still waiting on findings on that. There, you're right, there's been a study being done, drilling and stuff like that. John could probably speak a little bit more.
Yeah, but the report is at E U for review at this point.
So when do you guys anticipate getting that report?
Probably within the next sixty days, forty-five, sixty days.
All right.
Well, you brought up a good point. There was a, recently, an article written in the Spotlight about this council receiving millions of dollars and accepting carcinogens and none of that. We don't even know what the site, the demographic of the site is.
Well, I think that the, there was a, about, about Councilor Topaz making the, making a motion.
When it's got further than that, and it was written by Nancy Whitney, and it was really slanderous in where she was going with that, and I do not appreciate it one bit.
I don't know Nancy Whitney, so I just think.
But it makes the Spotlight look like they're, they're producing it all over Facebook.
Well, why come down here and ask questions?
Absolutely.
Because I think it's important to know what.
My phone is always with.
You know, what's going on, so I just, it's been something I've been very, I've been very concerned about, very, I mean, especially with the river, talking about making the, you know, the riverfront development, you know, and all those things. I think it's just super important to take that all into consideration.
I like Nancy, I've literally been at her house. I've watched Darryl Swanson call her while I was there. So she's definitely tied in with the editor, and that was two years ago. And I do not approve of that somebody would print, even though it's a letter to the editor, something so fictitious. I'm very upset. It upset my family. I had to explain to my family, none of that is true. Nobody has, I have nobody in my.
I encourage anybody and everybody to come down here and to talk to you guys directly in regards to it.
Absolutely.
So, and I will continue to come down here to try to get the answers that I think are important. In regards to the riverfront, one thing I do have a concern about is the fact that it's in the, the buildings that are gonna go in there are gonna possibly be in a floodplain. So I just don't know if that's some of the conversation, but I'm sure that's something you guys have all worked out amongst yourselves. That just seems something that seems like it would be a good thing to talk about now, as opposed to waiting until things come later, and then it becomes a problem for builders, because.
It's been a key point in, in the beginning stages of it.
So, yeah, well, cool. Happy Wednesday.
Yes.
Thank you.
Seeing you here, it just reminds me that we had one of our schoolteachers pass, David Schmore.
Very horrible, so, yeah. I appreciate you bringing that up. I didn't know this was really the place to talk about it, but, so.
Former resident, his father, him, so.
Yeah, we'd like to try to start a scholarship of some sort and on his behalf. I talked to him in depth about that. He was always really a big advocate for people, all kinds of different people, no matter who it was. So one of the things he would like to see, that he, after he was gone, you know, he'd been fighting his situation. So, yeah, so that's something that hopefully will be in the talks about later, and hopefully maybe it'll bring an opportunity for other kids that are in, you know, I don't know, perils per se, diverse people that are, you know. He was very involved with, you know, the theatrics and, I mean, speech was his job, so he got a lot of people that have, you know.
A voice.
A voice, exactly. Thank you for saying that.
Yep. Any other visitor comments? Okay. Send me any report from Chamber of Commerce, Chrissy Marklet.
Mark Court. Mark Court. You will get it right.
Well, Chrissy, I just stuck on that.
You will get it right one day. Well, good afternoon, everyone. So, yeah, here to give a report on the chamber, and what I'll do is I'll just kind of talk about the kind of the top three goals that the chamber has identified that they need to focus on for 2020, and just kind of give an update as to what we've been doing and how we are working to achieve those goals. So at the beginning of the year, at the first Coffee and Commerce, we had about sixty people at the chamber for our first Coffee and Commerce of the year, and at that event, I gave an update as to what we're focusing on. So our three goals is, number one, membership value proposition, and so that's the biggest thing, is we're working on getting more members, you know, as we all know, I think there's over two thousand businesses that the City of St. Helens issues licenses to every year, and if that number is incorrect, please feel free to correct me. And we have less than two hundred chamber members, so there's obviously a big gap there that, there's a big disconnect, and so we are actively working on filling that. On that note, the second goal is continued financial stability and growth for the chamber, because we all know that has been an issue, so we are definitely working on addressing that, part of which is by increasing chamber membership and diversifying our revenue streams in. And then the third goal, kind of tagging on to the first two goals, is continued partnerships. So those are kind of our three main goals that we're focusing on for 2023, the chamber. The first thing that I want to do is I want to talk about the coffee cart. In light of my last, the last time that I was here, the city generously made a fifteen-hundred-dollar donation to the chamber to get the sink installation and get that up and running. Do you have an update on that? After, you know, kind of six months of back and forth, we had the inspector, and the inspector determined that we would actually not need to do a sink modification, because the coffee cart is being run by the St. Helens Lion Express, and they have a special license and grant for the coffee cart. So as long as the St. Helens Lion Express, as long as one of the kids from that, one of the kids from the St. Helens High School, along with Lori Brownlow and Megan, who are the youth, youth transition program specialists, as long as they are the ones that are facilitating and managing the coffee cart, and no other, no other entity is doing so, then this chamber actually does not need to modify the sink. So, so that's good news. We have not yet decided how we are going to reallocate those funds. We will discuss that at our next board meeting. Our last board meeting, we didn't have a quorum to be able to make that decision, is what we would do. So we are in discussions about what we're gonna do with those funds, and kind of discuss what is kind of the next thing on our priority, and make a vote from there. That being said, now that we don't need to do a modification for the coffee cart, we actually have a launch date. Yay! So I spoke with Lori Brownlow, and we determined that Tuesday, April seventh, will be the first opening date of the coffee cart. And so the reason that we're doing, we're pushing it back out, because they need time to kind of talk to their kids, figure out who can run the cart, and make sure that schedule's aligned, because one of them have to be there to supervise the kids that are gonna be running the coffee cart. And spring break is coming up, and so we just wanna make sure that the timing is right, so that way there is, we don't wanna just kind of jumpstart and then not have anybody be there for a while, so we wanna make sure that we have some consistency, where somebody is there at least once a week, is what they've determined. And so in talking with Lori, unfortunately, it's not possible for a student to be there five days during the week, because again, there has to be supervision, but the goal would be to have somebody be there at least once a week on Friday, and hopefully on a Tuesday. And the reason that I'm suggesting, I'm, I'm saying those two days is because that's when Cake House is there, on a Tuesday and a Friday, and that's the best time where people are actually coming into the building, or getting traffic in the building on those days when Erin is there, and so that's kind of the plan that we're working on. So that is the latest update that I have for the coffee cart, as far as getting everything up and running. And so I don't know if you have any questions or comments? Yes, please.
What's the, what's your proposed hours of operation?
So Erin is there usually nine A. M. to twelve P. M., and we discussed that with Lori Brownlow, and she agreed that that would be a good time. There is potential for maybe an afternoon shift from noon to three, but again, she has to kind of take into consideration the kids that are gonna be running the coffee cart, their time, their schedule, but usually when Erin is there from nine A. M. to twelve P. M., that would be the time that it would be. Any other questions or comments about that? Okay.
So, on the, on this, the sink, so that was kind of a menu item of requests of different types of things, and the council made a motion to support the sink, so I'm hearing that you're gonna have some board who will reappropriate those monies. I don't know, is it this board?
So, that, that was gonna be the question. So Ginny and I had kind of talked about that, and we, we brought that up, and so we're, I guess, what would be the next step for us? And so we're, we're, yeah, I, this is kind of a, this is unknown for me, and so if that money was allocated for the sink and it's not needed, then do we give it back to you? Or what do we do?
I guess that's the question with the council.
So my question would be on the sink, it probably was more than that, fifteen hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I just know that sinks are an issue with certain buildings as far as running a, some type of catering, specific catering, so I would hope that if you guys would keep that in mind, that maybe there is a future need, maybe we can go through with the sink process.
Yes. Okay.
I know that the coffee cart allows us to run under this permit, but we've put on the chamber being there for a long time and thriving.
Absolutely. So on that note, and forgive me, I did forget to mention this, we did have a discussion at our January board meeting about possibly continuing with some type of a project to modify the sink for the future, potentially with some type of a remodeling that backroom into a commercial kitchen, so forgive me, I did forget to mention that. And so when I said reallocating, that was along the lines of reallocating to a potential future.
More conversation.
Yeah, so it just, we need to, before I say, oh, we're doing this and that, I wanna have more dialogue with my board to decide exactly where that fifteen hundred dollars is gonna go as far as a continued remodel of the sink. And so, yes, it was gonna be more than fifteen hundred dollars, but we just, since we, it wasn't, it's not an immediate need for the purposes of launching the coffee cart. Now, we can launch the coffee cart without the modification, but the next step is just to have more conversation.
And without you guys having to be out there, you might be a little more trudy on your bids as well.
Right, right.
Did you get, did you get a change of bids?
We, we got, we got two bids, we did not get three bids. And so we talked to Northwest Plumbing about the modification, and they, they were, I forget what the number was that they told me, sorry, I didn't bring that information with me, but yeah, we did get a couple of bids, and so, yes, we can be a little bit more trudy about what the modification would be. We did some research into the cost of the actual sink, which is probably gonna be around between three to four hundred dollars, and then there's gonna be the installation of the sink itself, and then reworking the plumbing. And so, and then, yeah, we talked to Northwest Plumbing, they obviously were, weren't willing to help out and everything, but I didn't get a specific quote as to what that would cost us, so.
I would, I would check with Pacific State List, just to, just to check with them and tell them what your future hopes are for a commercial, maybe a commercial kitchen. They might, I'm not gonna speak on their behalf, but you might be shocked at what they would be willing to do for.
Just took the timeline pressure off, 'cause the coffee cart is not waiting for it, and it needs, we just wanna be more deliberate, because they also had lighting needs, and we're like, where are we financially? What timeline, what makes sense to do when? And we didn't have that time to go through that.
I think it's Josh Kemp or.
Tom or, Tom or Jeff would probably think be the ones that I would talk to.
Jeff, Jeff Kemp was chairman of the chamber board.
Awesome. I will, I will reach out to him. Okay, so that's the update that I have on the coffee cart, so stay tuned, more to come. So I mentioned Cake House will be there twice a week on Tuesdays and Fridays, and she's doing really well, and so in case anybody is wondering about that, but yeah, she'll be there on Tuesdays and Fridays, and she decided that those would be the two best days for her to be there. Being there five days a week for her at this time is not conducive to her business, because she was, her business has grown as a result of being at the chamber, but for her, she wanted to kind of minimize her time to two days a week, that way it made more sense for her business-wise. And so that was kind of the update on Cake House. As far as members, I kind of alluded to this earlier, but right now, we're, as of right, now, as of today's date, we currently had a hundred and sixty-seven members of the chamber. Our goal is to get to two hundred by the end of the year, and we have some efforts in place to actively work on that. Our goal's for membership, and so something that's exciting that we've done is that we've recently launched a chamber ambassador program, which I'm really excited about, it's something I've been wanting to do since I've been here in my role. And what a chamber ambassador program is, it is a group, it's a volunteer-driven organization of chamber members who are very active in the community, they're enthusiastic about the chamber, they wanna support the chamber, they want to help to advocate and promote the chamber and be out in the community, and they're so by doing, helping to kind of get their names out, get their businesses out, and gain, gain some visibility with what they're doing. So it's kind of, it's a wonderful kind of collaborative partnership, and so we are planning on officially launching that at the beginning of April, as far as having chamber ambassadors help out with Coffee and Commerce events, and just kind of helping to run those, 'cause our Coffee and Commerce events are very well-intended, we have anywhere from twenty to sixty people that usually show up, but we, on my end, I need a little bit more support, kind of managing that, because I want Coffee and Commerce to be as an introduction to the chamber, and then from there, we want to be able to use that to recruit people to join the Chamber of Commerce. And so I just needed a little bit more support around that, and so I started this chamber ambassador program. We have about twelve people that have been interested thus far, that have expressed interest in, in becoming chamber ambassadors, so I'm really looking forward to seeing that program develop, and then the long-term goal is to eventually have them kind of take the part of running our Coffee and Commerce events. Chamber ambassadors will be at ribbon-cutting ceremonies, which we have one coming up next week, I'll talk about that, and also just after-hours events. And so those are some of the things that we are working on to kind of help me to spread the word about the chamber and the work that we're doing, and just with general recruitment, membership acquisition and retention renewals, and making sure that chamber members are being visited, and that they're being talked to, and that they are aware of what the chamber is doing, what we have going on, and that they're aware of their benefits, and so they're gonna kind of help me to spread the word about that. So something that I'm really excited to get started, and I look forward to updating you more on that as I attend more council meetings and as for my next annual report. So that's kind of what we're doing as far as membership. We did have some recent changes to our board, and so we've added some new board members, which again is wonderful. We've had added Brian Walker, who's working on reopening the John L. Scott Building right there off of Columbia, next to Miyako's and Rocket Salon, so that, that should be opening, I think, in May or June. So he's joined, we've had Susannah Hensley with Inroads Credit Union, who's also joined, and Alex Tardif, our county commissioner, has joined the chamber board, and then we have Gina Sisco from the Port of Columbia County that has recently joined as well, too. So I'm glad about that, because these are people that are very much in the community, you know, they're people of influence, and they will also help me to help to spread the word about the chamber, and so more support on my end. As far as upcoming events, and so like I mentioned, we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony next week, which I would love to invite city councilors to attend. It's with Realizing Art, so right back there up on First Street, Dana with Realizing Art Tattoo Shop. So her ribbon cutting is next week, Wednesday, March eleventh, at one P. M. Just be a brief thing, we'll have a couple of appetizers, and we'll do a little speech, and she would love to show the public her shop and what she has, because she's not, she just, doesn't just do tattoos, and she has a shop where she has a rotating artist featured on a monthly basis, and she offers health and wellness classes, and so she's not your typical tattoo artist, and so she'd love to share that with the community. So I'd love to invite the councilors to attend that next week, Wednesday, and I made sure that you guys didn't have a council meeting, so that you could attend it. Something else that we have going on, which I'm also really excited about, I have partnered with one of Federal Credit Union and Cascade Crest Insurance. We are wanting to bring a business education series to Columbia County, and so we're calling it S. C. C. Chamber University, so what we're wanting to do is we're wanting to offer more business education classes to the community, because we know that's a need that happens, that is needed out here. I have, we've offered, I think, in total, probably nine classes since I've been in my role at the chamber. Inroads has offered a couple of classes around commercial lending. I taught three classes, two on marketing, and one on getting a business started, and then we've had one of our chamber members offer accounting and cookbook classes, and we've had some really great feedback and response from the community that they want more of that. So on that note, we actually have an active survey going out right now, so if you go to SouthColumbiaCountyChamber.org backslash survey, you can take a five-minute survey. And in that survey, what we're looking for feedback is on what is it that people want to learn? We've identified topics anywhere from Small Business Number One to marketing, to H. R., to maybe, you know, political roundtable, to have, you know, people come and talk about, like licensing, that kind of stuff, finance, mortgage, everything. So we've kind of identified ten topics that we'd like to know, what is it that people would like to learn about? We're looking for feedback on classroom-style learning, whether people want to learn with a live class, with the opportunity to answer questions, or get a recording, or do an online class style. We're looking for when people want to learn, whether it's during the day, whether it's during the evenings, or during the weekends, and we're looking for local instructors and facilitators to help us to teach these classes, 'cause I can teach a lot about marketing, but, you know, more is always helpful. So we have that going on right now, so definitely a call to the public, if you are interested in learning, if you are interested in business education classes, give us some feedback about what we can teach you, and we're happy to kind of get that together for you. We have our next Coffee and Commerce coming up at Orange Grange on March thirteenth, so bring your candy for the Easter bunting. And then the last thing I'll talk about is that there is a job fair coming up next week on March thirteenth. I will be there offering resume reviews and kind of training and feedback at the job fair on March thirteenth, and so that's kind of what I, oh, sorry. The award ceremony, we have postponed that until the fall, to kind of give us a little bit more time to kind of get our bearings and start to get ready for that. And so we, the board made a vote to postpone that until the fall, to give us a little bit more time to kind of get prepared and kind of make sure that everything is stable financing-wise before we offer that to the community. But it will be happening, but it's just been postponed until the fall. So that's what I have. Any questions, concerns, comments, updates, feedback? Okay, wonderful, thank you. Thank you, I'm trying. Thank you guys so much.
Okay, have tap for community deletion request, housing public. Bill, you wanna come on up?
I can. I wasn't sure if you were coming, so. Before I get started, there's a couple of events we have coming up. We've emailed over invitations. The first one is on March twelfth, this is our celebration of our remodel in our warehouse. our warehouse. And this has been a project that we've been working on for a few years. We received nineteen thousand dollars from the Oregon Community Foundation, and seventy-five hundred dollars from P U D. And we have basically replaced the whole back wall of our warehouse and built, buildings within the building are volunteers. It's climate-controlled, added plumbing to the building, put in a handicap accessible restroom. So, you're all welcome to come over. It's at five o'clock, and we'll give you refreshments. So please come to that. Also, on March twenty-first, we have a wall-raising event for our new project. So, and that's be ten o'clock, and we also emailed an invitation to that. So, you're welcome to come to that.
Will that be on the house over on Seventh?
It's on South Seventh. It's across from the Armory.
Right.
South Seventh and Plymouth.
Yes.
So, the public forum, this is a little different than what we've been doing in the past. And I kind of wanted to give you a little information about the origin of this idea. Last summer, Habitat for Humanity International launched a cost-of-home campaign. And the reason they did that, is because they realized that, you know, just staying within our little box of what we do is not going to solve the housing crisis. So, they wanted Habitat affiliates to get more involved with advocacy and trying to change policy and getting people talking about this problem. Because Habitat for Humanity is a six-billion-dollar brand, and it's truly the ideal organization to bring people to the table to talk about this issue. And so, when we had our groundbreaking for this current project, we had K E W come out, and they filmed it, and we were on the news. And it was great publicity, but interspersed with what we were doing, they showed little clips of, you know, shopping carts, homeless people in Portland pushing shopping carts and things on the sidewalk. And, and we realized that there really is a huge difference between the housing crisis, what it looks like in a rural area, and what it looks like in Portland. And that was just a little bit jarring to see that. And so, we came across the Oregon Humanities Grant, that the idea of the grant was to give voice to people that are affected by an issue, and bring people together for a community conversation. So that was the idea behind starting this public forum, and be a series of public forums in, in three cities. The first one being St. Helens. And so, we were going to start that out on May seventh. And so, the format would be to have a panel, and have people from the community come in. And Bill had a great idea of having, you know, putting some issues on the wall, and have people come in and get some stickers, and they can kind of, you know, put their stickers on what issues they're interested in. And we wanted to hire a professional moderator to direct the conversation, so it's not just a bunch of people coming in and complaining about things. We want it to be a constructive community conversation. And then, also, to have different organizations that are working on this issue, to have tables with information present, so that people can come in and get information, hopefully be able to address their own individual problems. We wanted to do it in the evening, just to have it for, you know, an hour and a half, have some food available to drive people to the community. Ideally, we were trying to get a celebrity speaker. I know that Adriana Franch, she's a Portland Thorns goalie, and she is, she grew up in a Habitat house. And so, she saw the impact of that house on herself and her family. And we put a request in, but haven't heard anything back yet, so I don't know if that's going to work out. Betsy Johnson has agreed to come to the St. Helens panel, you know, panel for that. So, this grant that we're going for was five thousand dollars. And in order to have a submitted proposal to that, we started talking to all these organizations about whether or not they wanted to do this to gather support. We gave a presentation to the county commissioners, and they were on board, and, and, let's see, I almost forget her title. Columbia Health Improvement Coordinator for Columbia Pacific C C O, she was in the audience at that presentation, and she said, yes, they would give five hundred dollars, she just volunteered that. And so, there's a lot of enthusiasm for this, from Community Action Team, from Columbia County Mental Health. And then, we found out we didn't get the grant. So, we went around the county, said that they would double what they had pledged, if we could get buy-in from all the cities, and if we could get the cities to contribute also where we're holding these forums. So, this is what this proposal is, is to make a request to the city to contribute seven hundred and fifty dollars. And it should be budgeted.
We definitely have a problem. We sure don't have a lot of real good ideas how to fix it yet, so that page is open.
Yeah, I concur. I think that it is a problem, and I think the financial help is a feasible request.
Okay, well, I would have to agree, and, how's the Carl from, I think we're in crease?
The idea of having somebody neutral?
Yep.
Do you have to have one side or the other? Somebody neutral is definitely spot on.
Yeah. It's definitely, it's really frustrating when I go to seminars and I hear about affordable housing, because it's like a myth to me. It just is. Unless you are a Habitat or a, my home was a U S B A, this is what Equity Program, Community Action, they've been trying to get a project to go for a long time in Scappus, and have failed to find enough applicants in the beginning stages, and then cost of development, and everything else with that project now, with Saglocks and Scappus, and, yes, killed the project. But, yeah, we're really, we need to find some different avenues.
I know I attended the local housing solutions seminar several months ago, where several different cities appeared, this was in downtown Portland. It's interesting to have those discussions, because you get good ideas from those. But the fact is that each one has applied and taken on this whole issue of how to have affordable housing in their communities differently. Some have actually taken positions, taken positions within the government for affordable housing, like an affordable housing director even position. Depending on how bad it is, they know the need is there, and they need.
Yeah, so, I think we got, is it some of this, that we'd like to donate some?
Some free.
So, that, council funds?
Is there a motion needed?
Motion to supply funds in the order of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to, okay, I've got three manly, seven hundred and fifty out of our council funds. All in favor? Aye. Posted.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Up to the next one. Yeah, good luck. And that open house is nine to five?
No, no. March twelfth.
Okay, March twelfth.
Sure. That might not be, only one there.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's get our speed fighter, cake up.
Okay, thank you, council. I don't have Google Earth to show you aerial photos this time, but I'll just talk about some highlights of the activity report in July and February, and just show some stuff on the screen.
July?
Get to that. I don't know why I said July. January and February. It may be the sun. So, January, a little bit of enforcement stuff. I talked about the hemp drying business before in Milton Way. Finally had further communication with them, issue with storing versus drying. Drying creates a substantial odor, and many cities have had issues. A good classic case is the city of Malala. Our own judge works for them, and they had someone move in there, and there was a bunch of people in uproar over the odor. In our case, you know, they were drying for a certain amount of time. I talked to them about the permitting requirements because of that. And right now, it sounds like there's oversupply, so the economics are finicky. Whether or not they want to dry in the future, they'll get permits, but right now, they're just sticking with storage. When I talked about it before, I hadn't had some of those final conversations with them. So in case that mattered, I wanted to make sure you were updated on that. We had a large shop built next to a house on Gable Road, and we have various rules. One of the things that these people did to deal with those rules, to allow a shop as large as it was, was to attach it with a breezeway. In this case, it was one that was around a hundred feet long, and they removed it immediately after their final inspection. So we had to send them a nasty letter. But since then, they've complied. They've got a variance with the planning commission, and they're, and they're moving forward. So that's something that luckily didn't take us to be too mean. Another issue that has been going on since mid-two thousand eighteen is some R V living on a church property in Gable Road. And we don't talk to them in, in mid-two thousand eighteen in the summer. And then, code enforcement has made occasional subsequent contacts. Church has been pretty good about communication. We've been telling them, you know, this is something you need to resolve. I believe it has been resolved. So, and, and that's one of those things, I don't think it ever got to the council. So a lot of it is stuff that you don't hear about, that you know it's not elevated to, you know, one of those council concerns. February stuff, we had a kind of a Q and A meeting with some folks working with the Armstrong property. They wanted to move some lot line adjustments around. And the people were kind of pushy, and that's usually a red flag. And what they were proposing, you know, something I think I could have got on board, but I wanted to talk to the other agencies about it, D E Q, D S L. And the funny thing is, when I talked to D E Q, they were surprised to hear it. And then, their consultants were also surprised to hear it. So, that is, Lisa, that doesn't need to be up, what you had up before was just fine. So I, I think they have, well, the cart got before the horse. So we'll see if that comes back. We also had a pre-application meeting, just as a reminder, that's a meeting we have before land use application is submitted. And this is for the old Violet's Villa property. Two lots have been developed, legacy, and of course, the apartments, which if you've been out there, they're going up really fast. It's like night and day from a couple of years ago. And we anticipate another proposal, a grocery store, commercial development, another building pad of yet-to-be-determined use on the remaining portion of that site. So that's something that'll keep us busy pretty soon. So, stuff is still moving there. The holidays are over, so, and it's getting nice. Things are getting busy again. I assisted staff and D S L with some legal descriptions for our lease on the Menominal Channel. This is one of the random things that we help with internally. Something that happened on the Vaught Building, also historically known as the Bennett Building, there was some work that started, that should have went through architecture review. Our planning commission is aware. Some citizens came to the planning commission meeting last week. Some of you may have heard about it, but we're, we're working that out. So, hopefully that doesn't become a, hey, council, look what your staff is doing, kind of issue. One of our planning commissioners are moving away. You've probably noticed that there is a notice for planning commissioner vacancy. So far, we have three applicants, which is good. Sometimes, we don't have many. That closes the twelfth. If you happen to know anybody that would like to apply, there's still a little bit of window of time. Once we get that, then we'll interview and see if we can fill that seat. Geographic information systems, some basic data updates. One thing that threw us a curveball is, we take data from the county, and they reformatted it. And so, someday, we'll have to change what we do a little bit, so the data is usable, is more usable for us. It's just one of those, eh, son of a gun things when you're busy, but that's life. And then, we also, I assisted the engineering department with some software reinstalls after our cyber attack in January, which screwed some things up. Something you'll be happy to hear about is our wetland delineation efforts out on the St. Helens Industrial Park, the Oregon Division of State Lands. We have concurrence. They've concurred. So we know where the wetlands are at, and the ones they care about, and all that fun stuff. Army Corps of Engineers, they reached out to me saying that their approved jurisdictional determination, their formal documentation about that is on its way. The draft is done, but the Army Corps has a lot of layers, a lot of internal agencies that need to review. I anticipate seeing that any time. So I'm glad that that is finally reaching a point of completion, since we've been working on it more than a year. Marde Road Property, the famous one that we, that we acquired a third of it from the Columbia Health District. We are working on that zone change. If you recall, a couple of council meetings ago, there was a determination to go with mixed use. And this is one, it's going to have a lot of eyes on it. We want to make sure the report's done properly. And we have been working on it here and there. And we know it's a priority, especially because of the two-year time extension, which I'll talk about really soon, for that easement. And we, we work on it as we can, given everything else. But that is, that is in the works. We also started working with our legal counsel for the two-year extension of the Chase Road easement. There's been dialogue with legal counsel, someone with Jordan Ramis, about that. And hopefully, they'll have something to us soon. The St. Helens Industrial Park planning efforts, we had our kickoff meeting this month. Associate Planner Dimsho is taking the management lead, and we're looking forward to the outcome on that, to help us develop the St. Helens Industrial Park in an organized fashion. So those are the exciting things from the department reports. So what I wanted to show you here is, one of the ordinances on the docket for tonight is the one that includes the house right over here into the designated, designated landmarks register. We had a public hearing on that, so you should be familiar with it. And the, the exciting thing, and everyone's while we get something fun to do, this is the map, the official map in our comprehensive plan. It is zero nineteen eighties, and kind of useful. Basically, you look for the black blob, and well, there's an historic resource somewhere around there. And of course, we haven't really had a reason to change it. I, you know, I would have liked to have changed it many, many years ago. But now, we have to, because it's being amended. And if you want to look at the list and stuff, you can look in the ordinance. But I just wanted to show you briefly, there's a couple of map exhibits in that ordinance. And the next slide in this is one of those that we prepared, that just, it, it shows those resources better. They're numbered, so you can look at the list, and look at wherever you are on the map. And I just wanted to give you a, a brief orientation on these. As long as I've been here, I don't think we've ever talked about our historic landmarks with the council. It's just never come up. And the last time all this was determined was in the nineteen eighties. And I don't want to get too much into this. Hopefully, the youth council will be able to present this sometime in the future with photographs and stuff. Council Carlson and I have been discussing that. But I just want you to understand the geographic extent. This, of course, is where your main cluster is at, and that's the downtown historic district. No surprise, you have everything from the courthouse, to the plaza, to the various buildings. Here is the new one that will be included per the ordinance tonight. This is the Methodist Church by Sixth Street. This is, this one is unusual. This is the rock wall along Spain's Hill with the formerly blinking light. That is one of our historic resources. And a lot of our basalt construction are historic. That is one of our historic resources and a lot of our basalt construction are historic resources. That brings us to some of these. Those are some of the stone houses in town. Of course, the Chamber of Commerce and then the sole historic landmark on the other side of the highway is that old house right by Walnut Tree Park. So I just wanted to highlight that because we don't talk about it much. And even though we are busy, there is a slice of the pie. It's not a very big slice dedicated to historic preservation efforts.
I've got a question on that.
Sure.
Are there dates of construction that qualifies a historic building? Or what are the, what are kind of the parameters of that?
Sure. As far as time, generally looking at fifty years. And if it's less than fifty years, but still has a significant importance to the city in relation to an important person, event, or method of construction or something like that, it can be included. But usually the magic number is fifty years. And there's some other things, you know, eh, that doghouse has been there fifty years. What the heck? We'll let that. You know, there needs to be a little bit more meat to that.
Thank you. And the reason I asked that was that there's a internationally renowned, very famous architect whose first dwelling was in the city. His name is Pietro Belushi. And his, his dwelling was in the fifties. I think probably fifty-six, fifty-five, fifty-six and there somewhere. And it's, 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 I mean, it's nationally renowned. It's unbelievable. It's more than a historical monument. It is a monument in terms of architecture.
Is it the first one he designed?
This is the first. This is his first presidential design.
The board's commission had it on their tour of home.
Where's it at?
It's on Breaklister.
Okay. So.
Four seven four.
And that would be a good candidate for, well, for something we don't have time to do. But we have the primary list, right? The ones that are officially on our books. And then we have a secondary list of ones that we, that we think should be and should take some effort to get on there. And that would be a good candidate for that secondary list. But if, if you looked at this documentation from the eighties, the one thing that you saw was a lot of letters from property owners. You know, it's one, it's one of those property right things. You know, some people are historic preservation folks and they embrace it. Other people are like, get the hell off my property. And so there's always that, that balance. But that's good to know. I, I, I wasn't aware of that.
Is that Mercy?
No, that is Dr. Stewart, Dr. James Stewart's home. Contracted Belushi back in the early fifties and it's been there ever since. It's amazing.
Yeah, that's, that's an important thing to recognize.
It's not being lived in. That's, that's what's, that's what's unique about it. It's just, it just sits there.
Where's the owner?
The owner is his son and he's down in Sacramento.
Ah, I see.
In an old timers facility.
Interesting, really?
And the grandkids are keeping it up and they, and they know the value of it, but it just sits there. I get, I get a watch over it.
Interesting. Well, that could be a chore of finding the right person to sign saying, take us in. But I, I appreciate, I appreciate that information. Yeah.
That doesn't maybe quantify for historic, but this one does.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that hits all those. Back in September, October, the planning department put together its first goals. And after last week, I don't know if goals is the right term, basically the stuff to do list. This is something that I've done for nearly my entire career. And for a lot of times at St. Helens, I was a lone soldier and so it was just on a piece of notebook paper. And, and it's, it's, it basically, okay, well, you're busy, busy, busy. The application's coming in. Oh, God, all of a sudden it's not as busy. So then, okay, what am I going to do next? Well, you look at the list. And a good example of that was the recession. A lot of planning departments looked at things like code amendments and stuff. And we took advantage of the recession to update our transportation systems plan, do the corridor master plan and stuff which has kind of been folded in into a lot of the today's efforts with the riverfront connector and urban renewal and stuff like that. And so last time Jenny presented this to you, I was going to, but I was ill. And we went ahead and redid that. And so on the next slide, and this isn't, you know, this is just something, it's not intended to be sexy at all. It's just something we throw together so we can track. And this is just a, it's, it's a big message. If you want to read it, this is, this is the one we did before with just a bunch of notes. And the main difference I want you to see is the stuff in green, yellow and red. And then there's the wild card stuff below and that's just kind of how we, okay, what's, what's our priorities when, when we have time? And some of the things were not grand things to accomplish, but things that have been sitting around. And there's little Xs by the things we got done. We finally updated our official zone and comprehensive plan map. Last version was in two thousand sixteen. The wetland delineation stuff is pretty much done. We're just waiting on the Army Corps of Engineers. Back then, I was, wanted to get caught up in all the stuff we were dealing with, current planning, stuff coming in the door to start taking care of other things and we, we did kind of get caught up because of the holidays. There was some record retention stuff that we accomplished. The main thing I want you to do is observe the colors and the scale. So then if we go to our current list, when Jenny and I sat down and what happened. And, and so here's, this is kind of what we're looking at right now. And I'm not going to go line by line. Feel free to read this at your leisure. But what we observed was, holy cow, a lot of stuff that was kind of mid, mid importance moved its way up to priority importance. Now I should point out, this was done on February eighteenth, within the last week, if not sooner. The build grant, which is down at the bottom is a wild card. And wild card means, well, it could come up and it could take a lot of time. That has moved up to a priority because it sounds like we are applying for that. And let's see, is there anything I want to talk about specifically on here? Habitat for Humanity talked about housing stuff that is on our docket. If you recall, we adopted the housing needs analysis and we said that we wanted to change some policies, adopt a cottage code cluster ordinance. And there's some state mandated stuff we have to do, like including duplexes, it's permitted uses wherever detailed single family dwellings are. But we know that we have some other stuff we have to take care of before we can start focusing on that. And that's, all that stuff in the green. And I don't know, unless you have any questions or anything up there, I'm not going to delve into that too much. That fit, unless you have any questions?
No, a lot of stuff moved in the green.
Yes, it did.
Yep. Just keep us informed if you need new resources. If there's something that is blocking you on those greens, you need to know.
Okay. Well, actually, notice how on the top I put current planning in red and I just wanted to highlight that. Current planning is a very variable thing and it's something that we have to do. Someone comes in, they want to build a house, they want to build an apartment complex, they want to build a shopping mall. You know, all hands on deck. We want to make sure it's done right and we want to be able to help them as much as we can. So that, that, and of course, right now with the good economy, is a significant portion of the job. And it fluctuates through the year.
I understand you guys are very busy.
Yeah. So when that's really popping, you know, everything else below it can be challenging.
Yes.
And the other question I had for the council is we've been doing this for several months now where it's me or Jenny alternating once a month. And is that too much? Is that not enough? Do you want to stay, keep it as?
I like, I like that flow. I like it.
Okay. And you can get from her perspective and mine.
Yeah.
All right, cool. We'll stick with what we're doing then.
I said, if you need any, anything on those that we can assist you with in any way because we're meeting in on our goals and we'll have more discussion on that type of stuff too, so. So we'll have some answers for you as well. As far as a little more direction.
I like that wild card concept. That's straight out of the NFL, I think, going up to the green.
You just, you just don't know because if the build grant happens.
Everybody moves back a slot.
Yeah, and then, and then, oh, we get it. Oh, oh, whoa. That's a whole lot of work now. And, you know, what are we going to say? Eh, screw the water front property. We can't say that. We know it's a high priority. Well, unless the council.
That is the bill, man.
Yes, it is, yeah. And, and we assume that that's going to be high on the council's list.
So, but we, so I understand and so this council understands is that on some of these projects in the future, we will be able to hire an engineer service and they will be kind of the sub because it's to their specs. Like Pilsen's going to follow the intersection?
Yeah.
Am I correct? Am I correct in saying that? The engineer has to kind of be the contractor because it's to their specs. They inspect, they're not the contractor, that doesn't work, but they are the final approval of those projects and following.
They are the final approval. That is correct, but they're not always, they can designate the city to oversee a project.
So that's what I'm saying though, is if we had local projects and needed a private engineer to follow, that's what they're, they could do that on some of our projects.
Yeah, sometimes you need design professionals. At, at the local level, we're jacks of all trade. Jacks are drills of all trade, so.
But if you guys are busy planning and reviewing, maybe that's, I'm just asking. Because I know we are busy, busy, busy right now. There's no doubt about it. Everybody can agree on that? And Jake?
Well, you said at the beginning. It's, the police stations are a good example. You know, we are design professionals so they can work it out and we provide input because obviously we know our codes and our plans and stuff. But yeah.
Okay, that's all I, that was, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Yep. Hey, budget planning. Matt, doesn't have your name on it, but I know that's you.
It's me. Try technology, see if it works. There's a backup plan. All right, so I'm going to go through just a quick PowerPoint presentation about the budget and go over some broad topics and give you some information about some of the staff requests that have come through to myself or John and what we have put into the budget so far. Obviously this is kind of a building process along with the meetings that we're continually having, so please keep that in mind. I did want to quickly touch on just the general process of the city's budget. Our first step, which we're kind of at right now, is receiving all the budget requests from the staff members. So those requests come based on master plan projects and goals and the missions that you set as well as department managers have in mind as they work throughout the year. So right now we're preparing what we have as far as lists, as well as I know I've requested, Rachel has requested, projects and goals as we go through these additional meetings to have discussions. And we talk about what your goals and mission are, what projects you want to accomplish so that we can allocate the resources appropriately to accomplish those. So after we get your council direction, then we actually prepare the actual budget document to a balanced budget. And that is what gets sent to the budget committee for approval to, basically the bottom line of the budget committee is, does the budget represent the goals and the mission of the city? And then ultimately it does come back to you for council approval and that all happens before June thirtieth. So a couple of things I want you guys, you all to keep in mind during this budget process is to keep in mind that we're currently going through an RFP process for the sewer and storm master plans. On the next year, the next couple of years, we'll complete a water master plan. We also have plans for updating the park's master plan as well. So those master plans never reduce the number of projects and the amount of money that's needed for those utilities, enterprises. So please keep in mind that we will always be adding projects. We will always need money. The list never gets shorter. The other thing that is more internally for myself and the finance department is to review the internal costs that we have throughout the city. The GFOA, which is the national organization that I follow as a finance director, recommends that we review those internal cost structures every three years. It's been about three and a half, almost four years now because I've taken a model that was used similarly by John Ellis. And so we want to go through that and make sure that we're allocating the right kind of costs around the entire city. So many of you know about the general fund support services that are charged to the enterprise funds, which is revenue for the general fund and meeting apartments. So it's reviewing those kind of internal costs to make sure that the allocations are right. We're not overcharging or undercharging for the services that we are providing to the enterprise funds and vice versa. The other thing I want to stress is the importance of the meetings that we're having right now, that we're having with, where you guys will kind of direct what projects, what missions, what things that you would like to accomplish as a council. And so I would like just to reiterate how important those meetings are for not only the council itself, but also the staff for the direction that you provide us for how to move forward. Another main topic is the staffing levels at each department. You'll see that there are some staffing increases in this budget. But there are a number of people here that are on the verge of retirement or within the next few years, three to five years, that could be retiring or leaving the city. So having an open discussion when those positions come available is very key and crucial to the next twenty, thirty years of hiring somebody because that's a commitment from the city as well as financially, because of rising costs for retirement as well as insurance. It's always good to have those discussions openly and not just fill a position on a whim, but have a discussion internally about the processes for each department and what's really needed. The other thing to keep in mind is you're not going to see anything in here about the Urban Renewal Agency, but that is in the city's plans for this next fiscal year to update the financial modeling. And John and Jenny, I'm sure will take control of that to help guide the city council and what's may needed to update that urban renewal plan for some of the property tax changes and boundary changes that we may see. Any questions? So I'm going to go through the staff requests and like I said, these are the requests that came to John and I. And we've sat down and we have worked these into the budget so far. So the staff departments are here to answer any specific questions. And I don't want to steal their thunder for some of their requests, so feel free to interrupt me at any time or ask the department head if there are any questions you have. So Public Works had a number of requests. Those include a street sign replacement plan, painting the public workshops, purchasing a new lawnmower, purchasing new playground trips, chips and a lean-to building for some of the parks' equipment that is currently not covered, new park benches, as well as a true cost allocation change. So that is the allocations that we charge water, sewer, streets and storms, how a utility worker is split out among those funds. We in the past have not been completely true to what has actually been happening. We've leveraged a little bit and sewer a little bit more than water or storm in the past just because sewer has a lot of revenue, so we leaned to that. And that has changed over time, so we've had to adjust the allocation method to be more appropriate. And so what I had Sue in the department, department do. And so what I had Sue in the department, department do, uh, is really go back and start from scratch to see where, if we had to go back and do everything the way it really should be, where, how much does the utility worker work in each of those departments? So that was something that Sue and Dave, uh, and her team went through and did. Did you wanna talk about any of the things?
No, I just wanted to point out one thing, the second item down that says paint the public workshop, that's actually the parks shop, um, building and, and not the public workshop.
Sorry, that's a typo on my phone.
Yeah.
How many, uh, I'm just curious on how many areas we have for chips? Uh, don't we have some of that foam, rubber, or a lot?
We have on one, we have on one play structure, the foam. Rubber.
I'm just trying to think of where seven thousand dollars worth of cedar chips would go when it's.
It's because it's so many loads and they're.
Two fifty units.
That's to re, that's to completely remove every, all of the chips that are there in, at any of the playgrounds.
You can get them from Beaver Bark, those chips.
They, those don't meet the compliance. We have to get them, we have to actually order them from, it's like South Carolina or somewhere like that, and they have to come from Longview. They have to meet certain standards. They have to meet a certain, they have to be certified to meet a certain standard. So they actually come from Longview, which we're lucky enough that there's a source that's close, close to us there, but we, we order them from a specific, uh, and, and we've, we've stopped around, this is the lowest cost that we can get. But the request was to, to actually remove all the chips that we have at the playgrounds and completely replace them, because they just get layered and layered, uh, as the years go on.
Is that Swanson and Longview that carries those?
I, I don't recall the name of the specific location, but.
I, I'm just curious. Id- identical chips.
They may appear that way, but if they don't have them certified at it, at an outlet, we can't use them.
Yeah.
U of government.
Yep. Federal regulations.
When it costs steady over a period of times, um, how does the, the matting, uh, the mats, uh, the foam mats.
Foam mats.
Compared to the chips over, like, maybe a twenty year period?
Sure, they would probably last, uh, uh, almost that whole entire time. And we have some that are almost that old at Campbell Park that only had to have really super minor pieces replaced, but the cost to do that would be hundreds of thousands of dollars. Yes, um, just, uh, we're looking at doing the, a new playground structure in McCormick Park, and just for that one structure was over one hundred thousand dollars, one hundred and ten thousand dollars.
And this is, me in collaboration with the businesses around our community, could you give me the specs on those cedar chips of what the government playground chips are required?
I'm sure we can get that, yeah.
Pass that along to Beaver Bark, when I appear to be identical chips, appears to me, and if they can meet these specs and sell them for twice the profit, it's coming to our area, so why not? Yes, if you could.
Yeah.
Drop that down and see if you could find the specs on that, I'll get them. Okay.
No, you're good. This is, this is why we're here. So, so City Hall, I put down finish, uh, utility building court renovations. If you haven't been over there, they have officially moved over to the new side, uh, and there's just a couple minor finishing touches on. What the purpose of this ten thousand dollars is, is to finish the remodel of the windows that are on the bottom side. If you saw, um, I'm sure you've seen, uh, and heard that the windows up on the top of the building have been replaced, we would like to continue that facade replacement, uh, with the bottom windows. The other minor thing is the carpet on the other side, on the court side. We've already pre-purchased the court carpet, just because I didn't run in, want to run into a similar situation when we did over here, where we replaced the carpet, then we had to do a patch job in the council. And if you step in the right place, you can see just a tiny bit of difference in the carpet. So we went ahead and bought enough carpet, cause I had, I saved some money in some of our furniture purchases to afford to buy carpet for the entire building over there. So it's just the labor cost of putting that in.
It sure opened up the other side.
Oh, yeah, most definitely. Yeah, it's, uh.
So much room for those girls in there now.
It's a whole new building over there. So we would like to continue replacing those windows, uh, with a similar finish and new paint job. I know there's some additional work on the bottom side where the tile is, that I, I know Roger is just aching and willing to do, and would love to do, um, just a matter of if we can fit that into the budget, that may come at a later time, we'll see how the funds work out. The police department, uh, has various equipment safety purchases that John, uh, and I have kind of allocated about thirty-five thousand dollars to. Chief, I'm not sure if you wanted to touch on any of those, or if you wanna just?
We're, uh, it's, it's replacing Tasers Bodymore camera video or camera operating systems. They've reached their, their end of their lives, and we don't have a pool, so to speak, to issue when other ones go back in for service to be repaired. So officers spend a lot of time passing equipment around, it gets very, very cumbersome for the officers. In addition, the officers need a, a patrol rated rifle due to the violence that we experienced last year. Uh, we had that double shooting in July, we had the October incident, so it, we, we're not immune to that. Uh, there's some rifles that need to be purchased. All the, the purchases are for operational necessity to keep our employees safe, uh, for the, the wonderful job they do. So that's in a nutshell. We actually have a meeting Friday, understanding that we don't have a blank check, so we're gonna prioritize with the supervisors on Friday of what, what we desperately need and what we might be able to, to lend by until the next budget year. So we're, we're also doing our part to, to internally make sure that we're doing the best we can to save money for the community.
Appreciate that.
So, network upgrades, about fifty to a hundred thousand dollars over the next two years. This will be seen in all the department budgets, um, as an increase to their IT fund, which is the charges for all of our computer replacements, as well as network upgrades, as well as the cost of our IT specialists that we have now. So over the next two years, uh, we've kind of earmarked about fifty or a hundred thousand dollars that maybe needed a hundred thousand dollars, is that the very high end, worst case, if we really have to replace a lot of servers or a lot of equipment? So we've already started down that process with Center Logic, um, and this also includes a dedicated network admin from Center Logic that could potentially be here at least four days a week, um, to solely take on that project of rebuilding our network.
I'm just curious, if you could, um, maybe just do kind of find some other people's budget that are actually leading in the IT and what would just happen with us for cyber protection? And what, what actually they spend on their services for the, the IT? And I, I know some of this is some of the replacement of equipment, but I'd like to know with the problems that we just had and with Palmet County, and that this is the future. Like to know what those higher costs are, and maybe we can start planning and budgeting for that.
Yeah, I can definitely reach out and to a couple of my colleagues. So we had just that discussion a couple of days ago, I was at a conference, um, so we spent, you know, one of our sessions was security, uh, and St. Ellings was brought up, and so we talked about that for a while. So, yeah, I have a lot of comparisons already, but I'm happy to share those with you and, um, some of the costs. So under the administration department is the government affairs position, this is Rachel Berry's position that she currently has right now. Um, if you'll remember, we extended that position through the end of the fiscal year, and it is on the, um, decision board for you as a council to approve that position, um, fully, um, perpetually going forward. But the cost of that position is about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, that's salary and benefits, so that's the fully burdened cost. And we've also talked with John about splitting this cost, uh, between the general fund and the economic development fund. So a percentage of her salary would come out of the economic development, and funded would not hit the general fund, uh, for this full a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, and then the other increase, and I have Crystal here to answer any questions about, um, her budget increases with some of the, uh, direction from the council of what stuff you would like to continue to see as far as the Gazette, uh, publications and all of that moving forward. Uh, we're seeing a big cost increase in communication costs. Uh, so if you would like to ask Crystal a question, I asked her to be here to answer any, but that increase started out a few years ago, about eight, nine thousand dollars. When I came on, I increased it to nine or ten thousand dollars, um, but with the, all the social media accounts that we have, all the dating and retention of everything, um, it's really jumping up, uh, to about nineteen, almost twenty thousand dollars, uh, just for communications. So I don't know if you wanna ask Crystal, um, any questions about that, or, or anything she's here to answer.
What's the bulk of the nineteen thousand dollars, Crystal?
Generally, we spend ten thousand each year on communications anyway, and that includes everything from boosting social media posts to some of the software products that we use to edit photos, to make videos. Um, the increase is mostly the nine grand extra that you see, that is for archiving social media, that is a state requirement, we can't get around that. We have a very robust social media, um, account system for the city, which includes Spear of Hall of Fame, and in order to meet the archiving requirements for that, um, we are in a higher bracket because of how much interaction and traffic that we see on social media. The other expense increase is council's desire to see mailed hard copies of the Gazette, so that represents about a five to eight grand cost in publishing.
What's a big cost for?
It is, just for a single or a double-sided eight and a half by eleven stuffed into utility bills, it's about fifteen hundred dollars. And that, you can't give very much info on a double-sided eight and a half by eleven.
I wonder if it'd be feasible, say, if you have a request to have a mailed copy that?
An opt-in instead of an opt-out?
Yeah, we, we cut that in half, but people opted out. I don't know how hard that would be.
Lots of government agencies are getting hit with paper costs and maybe seeing things that are not right.
Yeah, you, you could put together a distribution list of those who want a hard copy, um, you would have to mail those out individually though, um, including those with utility bills just for specific accounts. I don't believe would be possible with our service provider, that just mass prints and mass stuffs all through a machine.
What if on the Gazette you put the next article, you said, do you wanna continue reading this right away, if they're looking at it, then they need to contact the city and get on a mailing address? Put that right on top of the Gazette, if they've read it, they've looked at it, that's how, and then we drop everybody else? And it's every, every three months, reads that, or is it every two?
We've done, um, it will be semi-annually at this point, so that budget is built in for quarterly, so every three months, four months.
How's that sound to everybody?
You don't have to decide today.
Yeah, but.
You know, it's.
When the next Gazette go out, is what I wanna know.
Should be going out soon, I've been working with Jenny to plan for a spring one that focuses on our progress improvements and our trail improvements. But that will be this budget, no.
We can think about subscriptions and look at where, where people can opt in and opt out and do stuff digitally more, I think, to produce the content.
Well, I'm gonna tell you right now, when I get it, it goes right in the garbage. I'm the mayor. It does, I don't even look it over to try to see, I'm just gonna be honest with you guys.
I try to get as little as paper as my house as I can.
You can opt out.
I will opt out.
So part of that budget was based on council direction that they wanted to see actual physical mailings go out. We already have the monthly newsletter that we do electronically to everybody, as well as we can add a quarterly electronic version that goes out and not have to publish all the listed stuff.
Yeah, it's funny, you think about it and bring us a proposal on that.
The course of optic out means there's gotta be a bookkeeper at this end, putting little boxes, and that isn't cheap. So getting rid of it is not a zero cost.
Correct, I, I was just gonna point out that if, if we do that opt-in program, that will probably be me that sits there and has to print envelopes and address them to everybody and get them to the post office. So that does come at a significant time cost to staff.
That's work, that's too much work. It's just nice to be saving a few dollars.
It's, it's your Gazette, so.
Could you said eight to nine thousand was about what the?
If you wanna do more than, I, I built in a budget for if you wanted to do something more significant than just an eight and a half by eleven, like if we wanted to do an eleven by seventeen that was folded, that included more information and covered more of our departments, that budget's built for that, yes.
Maybe a topic for discussion next meeting or something. Finance department, obviously this is me, so we've been looking at our custodian contract that we have for city facilities. Right now, there are about a handful of facilities that are not currently included on that custodian contract, um, as well as there are, um, a, a few opportunities that staff and management has seen as far as what is being done on the cleaning. Obviously, in a time like this, it's very important to have a, uh, a good custodian crew, uh, that comes in. So we've been looking at potentially going away from that contract and hiring a part-time regular person to facilitate those duties all across all of our facilities. Currently, right now, wastewater treatment plant, public workshops, uh, the parks shop, recreation center, um, are not included on that current contract that we have for, um, our custodian services. So we're looking, and I'm still trying to put this together a little bit to map out the timing of each department and how much it would actually take for a custodian. But right now, it looks like a savings of about, um, ten to fifteen thousand dollars potentially, uh, if we brought that person in as an employee rather than contracting it out.
I just wanted to put a little note here, just for full disclosure, um, that contract employs people, that's the reason everybody knows that's my regular job, that I know some of those people that do those jobs.
One question I have right now, with the snappy virus running around, the type of custodial work you need really has jumped to a high specialty and actually almost becomes a hazard pay. Some of our buildings, not a whole lot of public goes through it. Other buildings, a lot of public goes through, which you have really no control of the health quality of those people. Is there some way to, um, fold in specialty cleaning if necessary?
So we do have specialty cleaning on a regular basis, or deep down, like carpet cleaning, um, and floor cleaning, windows cleaning on a quarterly, semi-annual basis. Specific departments that I think you're speaking to would be like the library, recreation center. And even part of, uh, mostly City Hall and utility building, I'd see a lot of people, especially the library, day in and day out. So, um, their needs, especially at a time like this, are obviously a little bit more of a concern and need a little bit more of that specialty.
Can, can a contract be built to the company that's cleaning it when this situation arises, they put in the A team rather than the usual team?
It can be, and we've, I believe, made those requests, uh, recently and in the past, um, and I think there are still some opportunities that aren't being met, um, when we make those requests with our current contractor.
Right now, the federal government, CDC, is really putting some hard guidelines on what has to be done in certain public areas. Also, we have firemen and other people that have to handle, we'll say, public emergencies that are gonna involve people who may be sick. Do we have, uh, again, back to, I don't think it comes down to custody or what, to clean up their equipment if we have to transport a suspected case?
I'm unaware of an answer for that question. Thank you, but it's a good question.
I would say no on that because they're, they're on board, and we're not, we're the fire department. Police department, yes, we would be responsible for cleaning up their cars.
Yeah, but if we had to send in our maintenance crew for some place, for some emergency, you know, now they're in the same boat as the police and the fire department. So they would need the same service, but typically not our.
We've done that in the past, and in the past, we, uh, cleaning up the, uh, drug residences that, uh, were kind of left behind. And, uh, we had our public works, uh, people refusing to, uh, go in and, uh, uh, be around that hazardous material, uh, needles, everything. So what we do, this is that we hired out, uh, consulting, that cleaning service to do that. So I think point well taken, that, uh, you keep, you keep kind of a note in mind for some of those emergencies, and I don't know where in the budget you budget for those. And if you do budget for it and you don't use it, does it just carry over to the next year or how that works?
Well, you can come clean my house up.
Yeah, I, I've seen it, and I agree.
So we'll, we'll continue working on that and keep you updated on it. The second thing on the. The second thing on the list for my department is the creation of a second accountant position. As you know, we have two financial positions, under myself, an accountant and then an accountant technician. And the lower person of that has really been working over the last couple of years to train and be able to do all of the things of the accountant in anticipation of that employee's retirement coming up in the near future. And so what we have found, especially now that we are getting close to that time, is that it's been very, very helpful to have a second person that knows how to do everything that that person does. So what I am recommending is to increase that lower level person to the same level as the accountant. That way, we have a little bit of redundancy in processing payroll, doing BAP, and a number of other things that they accomplish in their daily tasks. The third is the removal of the third.
Those two jobs are identical, kinda is what you're saying?
Right now, they are not.
Yes.
But that person is training to be able to step into that position.
Be able to do what Carol is doing.
Potentially when there's a retirement, so it's creating that redundancy. The third item on the list is the removal of a third U B position. So this was, if you're all recall, Shawna Duggan's position before she became the recreation manager. We kept this position as a part time fifty fifty as recreation utility billing, and then she was hired full time as the recreation manager. And so that position has stayed in the budget this current year at the full cost, just in case we needed to fill that position potentially. With the new system that has been put in, I tentatively thought about hiring a part time person because the utility billing department did see some additional duties as far as taking over business licenses and a few other aspects that came over when we lost our front office specialist here in city hall. However, I would like to take next year to, and you'll see that in a couple of meetings from now as we talk about projects for the upcoming years, but is going through the business license municipal code, updating that, changing it to be a little bit more effective and more efficient. And so I would like to officially kind of remove that position from from my budget as well as the city. Like, I don't have enough to really accommodate a third person as far as the work that I need to really do. And then the last thing in my department is the transition of the two F T E in court. We went through some of the changes in our municipal court. We actually shared, dropped down from two point oh F T E to about one point eight five. And we wanted to transition into our new software to kind of see if that was really needed for two full time people. We have found, under the recommendation from Judge Lindgren, is that having two F T E is very helpful, especially when somebody's sick. That somebody can have an actual vacation and work can still get done, they don't have to come in on the weekends and everything. So I'm recommending that just keeping that as as a two point oh F T E, which is, it is currently in the budget right now. And the last few things are the library. So Margaret, feel free to chime in any time here. The makers lab and the rental space for the makers lab is something that is a council decision you have already approved in the past. So we're putting that into the budget. And then the rental space for that makers lab would be continuing throughout the years. The library of things, Margaret would like to purchase some additional items for that. And then the unknown is the interior upgrades that they're looking for, painting floors, security system, lighting upgrades. Margaret already has a specific budget for that, and it is in the facility major maintenance fund. It's hundreds, some odd thousand dollars that was given to her many years ago, and she's just kind of kept it and does upgrades through that. So those funds are actually already allocated. And when they are used, she will come to the council and present those ideas and costs to you for for approval. But as of right now, we don't have any hard costs or estimates she's planning on doing. Cover everything?
Well, actually, the maker lab, the twenty five hundred, that's for the sidewalk. And that would come out of that facility fund.
Oh, okay.
You can s-
Strike the twenty five hundred?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, all right. Now balanced, the budget is balanced now, we saved twenty five hundred dollars.
Uh, Matt?
Yeah.
We just opened this new revitalized space for the water department in our guys. When are we gonna have a ribbon cutting, adding the people in the back who scraped the crap off the walls and put new paint and fixed it up and the new crew that's going in it? Are we gonna make it an official announcement?
We can, I I would actually, I mean, this, and this is just my personal opinion and thought, and I'm I'm happy to swallow that if needed. There are still a lot of improvements over on that building that need to happen. And I think it would be premature to hold a grand opening ceremony for the inside when we haven't done a whole lot and the outside still.
Well, as long as we have a grand opening, because a lot of our workers put a lot of work and did some really craftsmanship jobs. So when it's appropriate, we should have a ribbon cut.
I I agree. So I'm gonna quickly go through just a couple of the forecasts for the enterprise funds. This is assuming, like I mentioned earlier, the true cost allocation for some of those employees, which has made a pretty significant impact on the forecast for the coming years. So I wanted to show those forecasts to you and please, as I mentioned before as well, keep in mind that this is before the master plans have been updated. So there will be additional projects, additional costs that we'll have to work in to these forecasts. This is the water fund. So you'll see the five years of actual history, the estimated year end and the budget for next year as it looks right now. So the blue bars are the ending fund balance. The orange line is the ninety day reserve policy that has been approved by council, so we never want to dip below that line. So, but we appear appear right now pretty healthy, which is a good thing to have when you're going into a master plan process 'cause in the forecast after the master plan, you will see some of those ending fund balances going down just because of projects that are upcoming.
I don't know if you saw the article in the last Sunday article, but St. Helens is one of the highest cities that in, well, outdid Portland in building multi family dwellings for planning. Okay, my question is, have you put, have you factored in all of those, all of those multi family buildings and all of that into this? Because this just recently hit, and and I was surprised. I think I think St. Helens was the third highest in the state for multi family dwellings. The the in in residential dwellings.
So those are not built into the forecast. What I will tell you about the assumptions on this forecast, the forecasts that I'm showing you right now are assuming a one percent growth rate, but not a very high growth rate. I'm rather conservative when I talk about revenues. So I'd rather show you a modest number and it come back much higher. So in the revenue aspect, I only show a one percent growth. So that also does not include rate increases. If in the future you decide to do rate increases or the staff brings you recommendations for rate increases, I want to be clear that these financial models only assume one percent growth.
Thank you.
So they also, I will also mention that they also assume a five percent personnel cost increase over years, which looking at the last three to five years is roughly about what we average between retirement, purse costs, health insurance, and COLA increases for the staffs that are affected by this fund.
So I'm curious, is what the ninety day reserve, is that what's in the discussion here?
No, I'm I am just showing the forecast model as of right now with the current budget.
And the water fund?
In the water fund.
No, slowly go up. Looks like a little dip, but then slowly up.
So those are in the actuals on the left side, on the right side is the forecast. And as I mentioned before, I want to stress that this is before the master plan has been completed, which will be done in a couple of years. There are always project lists after that master plan process. So keep in mind, when you're looking at forecasts, no matter what it is, year four and five is really a pie in the sky best guess.
And if I could make one comment, if you look at the capital improvement project list, there's virtually nothing in water. It's it's maintenance, pipe sub projects, pipe replacement projects, straight line, we don't, there's not, no major construction.
Because the water tower's already been budgeted and that's not part of this, right? The water tower?
Oh, yeah, no, the the reservoir you're talking about, yeah, no, that's not, that's not in this, that's not gonna cost us any more money.
Just keeping the water flowing and improvements in the flow.
Yes, that's, yes, nothing major.
Keeping the pipes clean.
So this is the same idea, just in the sewer fund. As you can see, some of those allocation changes that I mentioned earlier has made a drastic impact in the sewer fund. When I showed you this forecast six, eight, nine months ago, we saw this fund along with the storm fund going below the ninety day reserve policy and into the negative. So reallocation of those salaries and benefits can make a big difference. And so moving forward, we've got that true allocation model that is really based on what employees are currently working on in each different fund. So it makes a a major difference.
So the next one will be Storm on your slide?
Yeah, save the best for last, right?
We do that.
So as as the mayor kind of preshadowed, the storm fund is one where we have the issues. And this is pretty apparent since a few years ago, when it was recommended by our consultant that came in and did a rate and study analysis to break this out of the sewer fund, to really identify where the outlier was in the system that we need help with. Before it was combined with the sewer fund, it kind of masked this loss, so to speak. Now, keep in mind, we will never get to the point where we go negative. We will make changes and whatever's needed in the future to correct this. So we will never go two million dollars into the hole in the storm fund, we'll never get to year four or five or even three. But it is something to keep in mind as we work through another master plan with the storm fund and those upcoming projects and how we fund those and how we model those for the future. And then this is the general fund. So a few things to keep in mind. The lines above red are expenses, green is revenue, the purple bars are the ending fund balance, the yellow line is the fiscal policy of a twenty percent reserve policy. The blue line is our recommendation and has been the council in the past goal to have a thirty percent reserve policy unofficially. And so really that inching toward that thirty percent is really our safety net for when the economy crashes. As you know, it's it's never a question of if it's going to happen, it's just a matter of when. So having that buffer of twenty to thirty percent really helps us in accommodating the next few years after a potential recession.
And why is the gap so different between there? Is it just because the forecast is not, I mean, that's forecast proposed?
So you've got the estimated, you've got the estimated year end, which is as of right now where my best, my best guess is where we're gonna be.
Yep.
Like I said, I am fairly conservative on revenues and on expenses. We tend to not spend everything that's budgeted. However, in this model, I show that we're spending everything that's budgeted, so. And I'm happy to answer any questions or if anyone wants to talk about anything specific about the budget. Other than that, that's all I have.
Look forward to having more meetings on this.
One of the things that's different about this, what Matt just presented here, is in the years past, we've helped balance the budget, I think, so there's a really concerted effort by staff to work together across departments to deliver the council of the balanced budget just as a starting place. additions, additions, and additions, and so forth. What would that result in the budget process?
Seven thousand dollar cedar chips.
Lot of chips.
I know. All right, thank you, Matt.
Yep.
So you have something else to interject?
Well, I was just gonna say, well, we have our communications officer in the room, leaving. I said something out to the council yesterday about how how our community talks about the coronavirus and the readiness. Talked to Margaret a little bit today about the traffic and the extended cleaning, but just generally the structure of how how it functions in the region, and I don't know if Crystal wants to chime in on the structure and the work that you're doing to kind of keep the community up.
Come on up, Crystal, so we can make this official and talk a little bit, 'cause this is something we just got asked. Columbia County Health District, right?
So normally, in a region wide situation, the county takes the lead. Karen Kane, who was a P I O for Columbia County, was hired in January, so they are left to live out of the P I O. The public health, since this is more public health related, Columbia County Public Health is taking the lead. They're working with emergency management. And our larger tri-county region has activated A G S. So I kind of sent out messages yesterday to see where everybody was at because I hadn't been receiving any updates locally in Columbia County area. Anne is working with emergency management and the CDC. They've created some messaging that they're disseminating to employers, to their employees. I've ordered out, wanted John to review what she sent last night. The public district have all sent out messages to their employees and family members. And then talked to Anne because she's on conference calls at the same time that the tri-county G S is happening, conference call's happening. So I'm going to be sitting in on those regional calls. I attended the first one today at eleven. So that includes Multnomah, Clackamas, Washington, Columbia, and Cowalts Counties. So that's kind of an information sharing conference call every day. So they send out daily updates, it's sent out by Multnomah County Public Health. Clackamas County, Multnomah County kind of have created a bunch of messaging and created drives that other agencies can access and share. We're relying mostly on Oregon Health Authority and the CDC and their messaging to determine what, if anything, we share to the public. We at the City of St. Helens today just sent out messaging to the rec program participants to let them know what we do on a regular basis to clean the building, what we recommend as far as if you have any kind of illness, whether it's cold or flu or symptoms that you might think are from COVID nineteen, what we recommend you doing. But at this point, both CDC and O H A are emphasizing that in in the U S in particular, there's a very low risk to most people. So just common sense, hand washing, covering your mouth when you cough or sneeze, just disinfecting surfaces often. But I will be attending those calls daily at eleven. So as things develop, if if there is an epidemic or a pandem pandemic that develops, we are plugged in with the regional communicators.
Christie, have you talked to the school superintendent's office?
I have not.
I would suggest you do, Christie over there, they've had quite a few conference calls and meetings, not only with the CDC and the state cell, but they also have developed a fairly big mechanism on if you have to close down, what kind of legal requirements you have to go through. So if you have to close down a lot of employees or like the schools, you've got schoolchildren, you've got employees, you've got teachers and so on. It's a whole mechanism that they've been brought up to date on as of yesterday afternoon.
Appreciate the update on that. Appreciate the update on that. So, Columbia County Health District?
Columbia County Public Health, which I believe is now under the jurisdiction of Columbia County.
Who's taking the lead in our area.
Is taking the lead for Columbia County, working with Columbia County Emergency Management. They have activated an operations center. So, any, any coordinated messaging would be coming out of them as the lead for our area. We are part of a larger communications region, which includes the Portland tri-county area. Multnomah County Public Health is the lead for our region. And they have activated a G S, which is a joint information system protocol through FEMA to, to handle the situation as it develops. So, all coordinated messaging is being handled through public health to disseminate it to the counties and then local jurisdictions.
I will assure people that I am ninety-nine percent sure that our school board has taken affirmative action on this as well.
I can check my P I O list that Portland Emergency Management, I believe, updates that. They just sent one out that was updated this week. I believe I saw Scott Stockwell's name on that list, so he should be receiving those daily updates as well.
They are, they are. I mean, they've got quite an extensive program or mechanism in place.
Yeah. Unfortunately, it just seems as if, I mean, in Columbia County, we're obviously very stretched thin when it comes to communications. Columbia County doesn't have the lead P I O, like I said before. Public health has been reduced in staffing. Some of the other local jurisdictions don't have their own communications person. So, it's relying heavily on what information we're receiving from higher up to share that info and then coordinating it. Because we, the most important thing is sharing accurate facts and making sure that it's a unified message.
Absolutely. Accurate facts, unified message, and if we get those, we will pass them along. We will be passing them along. We do have a robust...
We do, through the parliamentary area, especially with their resources, yes.
We also have surprisingly accurate and up-to-date connection with the public health school with Johns Hopkins. Margaret has been kind of watching that part of the connection. So, we have some other inroads for almost ahead of the CDC as far as what is happening.
Thank you, Crystal. Yep. Okay, so, update on Citizens Day in the Park. I was hoping to find out a little bit about the Kuanas, if they were like P I A, and I think they are. I talked to Lisa. I even talked to her last week for a little bit about this. I'm going to see what she's got here. Oh, yeah, I need to, yes, Councilor Locke is, is at home sick and we're glad he's not here. Sorry that he's feeling, not feeling well, but he did ask to be excused. So, this, this kind of, I came in to talk to Lisa about some of our staffing needs and how that might go. So, I think with, we need a little more information on this. As far as when an actual date, you know, if we are going to go, so I know it will be either the day of that parade or the following weekend. That we can narrow down, so we're coming up.
Either the third or the fourth weekend.
Yep, third or the fourth Saturday. My only fear is, is that we don't get the lack of, we get lack of volunteers because they're committed to the parade. But we could definitely attend the parade and even drive an old vintage truck right over to the barbecue and have it in afternoon eat time, three thirty, three o'clock.
Right. Can I, can I put you on the agenda for Kuanas tomorrow?
Are you guys meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
It'll be Independence.
That's right.
I would love to.
How about the Thursday after?
Yeah.
And I, I think, I think, I think that, you know, they hear it from the horse's mouth and then that way they, you know, there's any kind of go-betweens and misunderstandings or whatever.
Yes.
Because if you were there, yeah, it'd be good. And we can also invite the daybreakers there, because they participate in the, in that activity as well. So, get all the Kuanas in one place and get you there.
On our end, we'd have to probably commit, and we did commit to quite a bit at first, but to, and we did, we allowed comp time and stuff, but we would have to, if we want to make sure we're going to have volunteers, we should probably sweeten the pound a little bit. What, what employees are going to come in and volunteer, given the option. Because last year, we did that and there still wasn't a lot of response.
A lot of empty spaces.
Yes. And me and Lisa talked about that and it's a big, it's a big deal now. Citizens Day has got a lot of traction, so definitely, we got more than ever. We got the Skeppers Bay, the, what was their next adventure? Next adventure is coming out, set up, support car show people, you know, National Guard.
Get a worldwide disc golf attorney going and volleyball attorney going. Barlow bikes.
Maybe in the future, we could actually do the parade ends up there and we actually do the presentation of, I'm not saying change your, but that would be something. To the trophy there. Yes. Be kind of cool. Yeah, that's way out, way out, yes. So, that's all the reasons to discuss about it. So, I, we'll work together with Lisa and we'll come up with some creative ideas of more. And Matt.
Thanks for chiming in, Lisa.
People tell me to do.
That was great that we were, we had the whole council.
Burgers, yes.
But in a side note, I wondered if the whole city would be talking to the staff and we need to pass our community plan that we've done this with. There's community groups that would like to participate and they have still been community, maybe there's Boy Scouts that might want to be. Or maybe there's some other things in there, or what, having the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts.
So, let's go ahead and do a social media push.
Do you think there's other groups that would like to participate now that they know what it is?
We have, there's a contact.
Always dipping into the staff.
They can contact Lisa will be our go-to.
Matt.
I'm the guy behind the curtain. Yeah, I just kind of...
So, let's go ahead and have, let's have, ask Crystal to do a media push at Citizens Day, looking for, yes. Any nonprofits that want to set up too, of course, welcome.
Do these participate?
That means the rec department would be one of...
They did, they did a lot last year.
I know, we haven't do it all. Your community.
Matt.
I saw big eyes over there.
They're going to be doing a lot. They, they do do quite a bit. It's still a big, it's a big project.
Rec department is, is happy to help. You just need very clear direction of what you want us to do.
Expectations.
We had American Heritage Girls there. We had all of us. We had probably five different paid employees. We had employees show up that just ended up volunteering, which is great. And...
Vendors.
Yeah, we had all the vendors. So, yeah, it takes, it takes the village to, to do that project.
They ran out of coffee early on. I remember, I totally recall that.
I think it would be helpful if we had a date to tell people if we're looking for help.
Not till next council meeting? Yeah.
But I think you can, I think you can plus the date is June twenty twenty.
But that's vacation time, vacations and... Hard to commit. Mine too. I think of that and then as soon as we have...
Yeah, yeah, just tell them that it'll be happening in the last weeks of June, last weeks of June.
The after-school let out.
And I'll tell you what, if you give me a list that says I can't help on this date and I can't help on that date, it's probably going to be a big factor of what date it happens. Any nonprofit is more than welcome to and anybody who wants to help out in any way they want to. That's where that should be. Make sure everybody feels welcome.
It's a community event.
Open that. E T C will be there, maybe plugging some of their events going on if they want to be, they can be. More than welcome to, especially our city stuff that you're contracting. Okay, so that's all I have on discussion. Let's go with department reports.
Two freeway, I have nothing today. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Sue?
Just Jacob had a great report earlier and just, you probably all already know and understand this, but all of those projects that he had listed on there come through engineering and public works in some way. Some of them more so than planning department. So, we're just as busy as they are plus more, because we have our own improvement projects. And in fact, you'll be seeing the waterline project start sometime later in March here. We expect to have a pre-construction meeting with that contractor next week. And we're just getting ready to put out another smaller rehabilitation project, fixing some manholes around the city. Couple, couple small point repairs, so we'll be busy working all summer long.
Busy, yes, it's been very busy.
All summer long, so, yeah, just, just busy. And then, of course, Parks is already out mowing grass. In February, they started mowing, yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have several things. Two of them are in your packet. One is a council action request for permission to close the library at five P.M. on Monday, June eighth. This is so that we can celebrate Diane Barbie's thirty-two years with the city. There are eight people on staff and it's really not practical for us to have a celebration that interrupts the normal day in the library. It really needs to happen at the end of the day. And so, my thinking was that if we had it at five o'clock, there would still be people from the rest of the city that could join us at the end of their day, because our day doesn't end until seven. And so, we'd like to be able to plan that now.
Do we want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we adjust the library schedule to have a function for the staff at the library.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Would it be made a second to allow the library for a five o'clock party over there? A closure, is that what you said it would be?
Well, we would close the library, but we're looking at a venue closer to City Hall.
Sure, okay. So, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
The other one is a request to close the library on Friday, July third. Now, there are other, there are other options possible, but this was seemed to me to be the most straightforward. All the full-time staff has July third as a holiday. And ordinarily, we're open Monday through Saturday. So, the fourth falls on Saturday and the full-time staff has the third as a holiday. So, I, my thinking was that if we closed on the third, our three part-time staff members could have the same three-day holiday as the rest of the staff. It also would be extremely difficult to have the library open on the third with just the three half-time people, although we could increase their hours that day. It just seems as an equity issue, it would make more sense to do that. If we worked out some other configuration where we did in fact keep the library open on July third, we'd have people taking their holiday, the full-time staff taking their holiday throughout the week, which is probably exactly what the police department does. But the, the third of July is likely to be a quiet day in the library and it would be a logical one to have everybody just take the holiday that day. We, and the reason I'm asking now is that we, our plan our summer programs and we start advertising those in May. And so, it's good to be able to know what our schedule will be for the summer, as well as planning holidays for vacation time and that sort of thing.
What happens Sunday, the fifth?
We don't have library service on Sunday, haven't for years.
Make a motion, we extend the closure, the fourth closure of the library from the third to the fifth.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Would it be made a second to close the library on the third, between the third and the fifth? Fifth would be closed anyhow. All in favor? Aye, opposed? There you go.
All right.
What else you got? I know you got more.
Tomorrow morning, I should say tomorrow, Thursday, March fifth. There is a fundraiser called Wake Up For United Way and it's to benefit the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And there are coff, there's a coffee shop, two coffee shops in Clatska-Nye, one in Rainier and one, and Brown Butter Bakery in Scappus that are donating a portion of their proceeds to the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And so, if you are passing by during the course of the day, I would like to encourage you to drop in and give these businesses a little bit of your patronage and knowing that it will benefit the Dolly Parton program that's going on all over our county. And recently, in fact, there were separate groups in Rainier and Clatska-Nye and they have folded into the other organization that got started here and got some significant grant money. So, there's a countywide Dolly Parton Imagination Library that is under the fiscal umbrella of United Way now. So, it's countywide and being directed by, you know, one entity. So, that's extremely good news too. Friday, I am going to be at the statewide semi-annual library directors' meeting. And that's always a chance to get caught up on what's happening statewide in the library world. So, I'm looking forward to that. And the last thing is that in the spotlight, and soon to be in the Chronicle, I hope, is an announcement about Columbia County Reads 2020. That's our annual event when we encourage everybody to read the same book. And this year, we are going to have Warren Easley, who is a Portland-based mystery writer. He's going to appear at four of the libraries, Vernonia, Clatska-Nye, Rainier, and St. Helens. And the book is the seventh in his Cal Claxton, Oregon mystery. And this is a story about a L.A. prosecutor who retires to the quiet of Dundee, Oregon, but he always seems to go fly fishing and find a body floating in the river or whatever. So, we have the books available at the library and we encourage you to come check one out and get started reading and come to one of the events to hear Warren Easley. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Margaret. Matt? Lisa, anything to report? Pina?
So, I wanted to just start today by first of all thanking Dave for taking the lead and having some trailers come in that are parking and storing some things that we'll be getting paid for. And... And, uh, he was super accommodating and did a fantastic job of meeting people and being a friendly, uh, knowledgeable face for, um, the city of St. Helens. I also, um, want to, uh, publicly thank Thad for taking initiative to clean up a, a location that is amiable for everybody. And, um, the other thing that I kind of was thinking about today with, with the weather being so warm and just walking around town is that no one has stolen our cigarette, our cigarette containers, yes. So the streets appear to have less cigarette butts, which makes me happy because I have been known to just pay someone to go around and pick up cigarette butts because I can't stand it. But I'm noticing less and less cigarette butts. So I'm thinking that those little stand-up things are working and they're not very expensive. So I think that that was a good, a good little, uh, accommodation for people that are smokers. Also, um, I got in the mail from this, uh, little kid, uh, Flat, uh, Flat Stanley. And, uh, it reads that Ivan is a three-year-old boy who's obsessed with Halloween. We're hoping you guys can show his Flat Stanley cool time and send something back that's also cool. So we're taking some pictures of him around town and posting them online. And it's just funny because it's, you know, Oklahoma. So, um, that continues to propagate itself. Also, um, a reminder, uh, was put in front of me today from, uh, Molly's Market, who was selling postcards and with iconic shots of St. Helens on them. And one of them is of the day of the parade. And that just reminded me of how awesome the, uh, parade was, but also of the complete and total control of the police officers that run that into the street and allowing people to get down and through despite how many people were in the street, sitting on the street. They were really, uh, calm and were able to get our celebrities in and talk them through. And that postcard just kind of reminded me of that today. The, um, other thing is, uh, the Fourth of July. Are we doing Fourth of July? I'm, I'm already getting contacted for Fourth of July. Are we doing Fourth of July in Sand Island or are we doing it on this side this year? So I don't care which you guys choose, but I need to know for the fireworks people so they can, you know, put the right fireworks in place because they have to.
Huge request to have it on the island last year.
Yeah.
The show was not the show that we anticipated it would be because of the cost of going over to the island.
Yeah, it's expensive. It's like probably four thousand dollars to get them across to the island. I mean, I don't know that for a fact because John does that contract, but.
You just get a little less of a show.
Yeah.
Smaller show.
It was, it was, it was nice though because you had the whole waterfront. It was, it was a little different. I mean, it was nice. You know, the tailgate right up.
Yeah, to the edge of the bank.
Yeah. But we, if we are still in control of this, which we are, we have plenty of more money because that was not a show that we should be happy with. It just wasn't. I hate to say that.
The viewing was good, the show was bad.
Yeah.
We all have to decide today, do we?
No. I mean, where it is, where it is, I think it's important to know where it is because if it's over here, it does not cost as mu- you know what I mean? It's like we put money in transportation while they did versus putting it into probably fireworks.
Yeah, and I think you're right. I think, uh, when I did the Christmas ships, we had a certain size so we didn't have to worry too much about the, uh, shipping channel because that's a, they have to apply for permit because of the shipping channel.
Yeah, that's what she was emailing me about. Or we, you know, was getting that permit process all in place with the postcard. Yeah.
Yep. So, uh, what's the, kind of weighing the options of getting all the automobiles down here so that you can view the fireworks? Uh, is that, is that having it over in the island, is that a draw and is that a draw to our community? Is there, is there a business plan that one elevates to the top in terms of being more effective than, than the other?
From this side, I can tell you this was packed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we made, we made a few hundred dollars more at least on parking. And we only charged like nothing for people to come with a carload. So.
Yep.
It's, it, because that increased a little bit, but it does not make up for the fireworks.
It, it seems common sense to me that, you know, that if we started that, that we try to continue and then fine tune it, uh, since it's over on the island from maybe a forty-minute show to a fifty-minute show or whatever. It seemed to, seems to me like that would be, serve our community much more effectively.
Let me correct you on that. Last year was a fifteen-minute show. You're looking at a twenty-minute to a thirty-minute show. That's literally the, the difference. You're, you're hard pressed to get a Keith spoke of volunteers and, uh, I'm just gonna speak a little bit on this when we're in our council bowls, but that, that used to be entirely volunteer-based until the city decided it wanted it underneath the foundation, which.
No.
Kinda, no, it was the foundation.
This is many years ago.
Way before yields. Yes, there was promises about insurances that the city was gonna carry. He was a counselor at the time. He was also in charge of part of the foundation and thirteen nights. Enough said about that, but it was entirely raised by the community. And it was hard pressed to get, we, back then eighteen grand was a thirty-minute show. That's what it was. And it was all volunteers. Went over there and dug, got united rentals to excavate, tugs, the whole thing.
Yeah.
Just so you guys know.
We also got jumped out with the new federal rules because of September eleventh.
Yes, uh, but we came through that.
Yeah.
But that volunteer group came through that.
And I think someplace in town is a building with the mortar still stuck storage, you know?
I, I still think that.
I just wanted to make sure that you weren't, it didn't go out of here a forty or fifty minute show.
Yeah.
I still think that it's a measuring stick of how effective it is if we have it in the same place every year, then you can adjust other variables.
I would agree. I agree.
And so it, it just seems like, okay, we've got it over at Sand Island. Let's keep it there. If the variable is we don't have enough money, then we'll have to raise money somehow, some way.
Yeah.
I just, I just see it as starting to move it back and forth and then have the guys from Nob Hill come down and say you're, you're messing with the Osprey nest and this and that. So let's just keep it over there and keep it simple and, uh, and put our best foot forward in raising money to, uh, make it happen.
What if we acknowledge that it was not decorative show last year, that we want a better show and that we're gonna bump up the parking to thirty dollars per carload. You were charging twenty last year.
But we have pens.
We still can control that. We have rocks.
Oh, yeah. We can control the parking for sure.
Yeah.
But parking is such a small part of like raising the money.
I get it. I get it.
And I mean, when, when, when we go backwards, you know, there was a point when, um, you know, Shedco took it over because probably another group didn't want to do it anymore. And then they didn't wanna do it anymore because they realized how hard it was to raise money.
One year it didn't happen.
And then the next year I volunteered and raised eighteen thousand dollars on my own time, money and energy to have it. And then, and then of course it got dumped into the city because the city, the city ends up doing all of these projects that people don't wanna take over in the community. It would be really nice if it was a community, you know, driven event with, with lots of volunteers and people helping because it's not really a tourism thing. But what this just tells me is that I have to like figure out how to raise more than like, I don't know.
You need to raise twenty grand.
One of the things back when Shedco had it and before that with Jimmy Diller, he had his cans all over town raising money.
We had cans all over town last year. We had eighteen.
The problem was we started, we would have started at Shedco right now. So the whole town knew it. So.
But it didn't work with Shedco.
Well, it did when Shedco had it and they voted not to have it and that's when it got dropped. Um, Jimmy Diller's can collection and his, uh, sweet arming of many businesses in town raised the money way back when. And when we lost kind of the community being part of it, even though it was only a quarter, that's when we started having money problems.
I'd say you always had money problems from what I've watched.
The biggest fundraiser, what I can tell you right now, if you wanna do a street dance, close part of the street, get the.
Wieners.
We have the Wieners. That's who used to, that's who used to play. They're a local band.
I think there might be a little bit.
Horn dogs, horn dogs and maybe, uh, um, the Wieners and, uh, cause there's some, uh.
Local group.
Yep. And you close that down and you sell a lot of alcohol. That's the bottom line. That's how they used to, that was their main fundraiser. And they'd always close this down right here. Just hand.
So I'm willing to like do that, but if we don't ra- raise enough money, what does that look like? You know, I mean, that's my concern is how much, how much, you know, do we think we actually need if it's gonna be over there? Because between eighteen and twenty thousand, it's not very much money in the fireworks arena, right? It's probably not ten minutes.
Well, we're.
You know what I mean? It's, it's, and John, John does the negotiation.
Price at twelve, twelve thousand five hundred.
Yeah. So the difference between twelve and twenty isn't.
Even the guy who shot off the fireworks was not happy with the order. They, no, the company, the guy who shot him off was not happy with what?
What we got.
Twelve thousand dollars, yeah.
So there's a conversation.
Well, not really. They're kinda, I mean, it's, it's.
It's more money, really.
It's more money. Yes.
Yeah.
Like mayor's idea of a street dance.
Well, we can, we can definitely do that.
Thing.
Sure.
Definitely do that. And that reminds me that I went and spoke at Kiwanis last week at their luncheon and they were very appreciative to tourism in the city for, uh, you know, the contribution that they receive. Seven thousand dollars, um, goes to really helping impact the kids that they support and the groups that they support. So.
They need up between the daybreakers and, uh.
But they all kinda work together.
Yeah.
They all kinda work together and, and split up the tasks so that they can cover it. And they were really appreciative of that. So that is it. Unless you guys have any questions?
I, I would agree. I think we all agree the island is definitely where the food should happen because we are gonna be developing that property as well and might as well keep it consistent.
You're normal. It was, it was an exception to bring it over here. Let's leave it over there.
I think the guy who manages the campground will be very happy to hear that as well because it draws a crowd.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. Alright.
Maybe he can make a donation. I'm sure he will.
Yes. Alright, uh, John?
Alright, um, we mentioned earlier our trip, uh, trip to Independence tomorrow for some training and education about the city of Independ- Independence waterfront project and what they've learned and what it's meant to their community. And, um, the agenda for that meeting, which seemed to be fairly intimate first, has grown considerably. And we have alphabet soup from just about every state agency.
Lot of acronyms, huh?
Lot of acronyms. You know, Business Oregon and Oregon Parking Rec and also the Mid- Palmet, uh, Council of Governance Representatives will be there to just talk about what that project has meant to that region.
Good.
Starting tomorrow at ten o'clock. So we'll look forward to that. I think everybody's, it's going as where they're going to City Hall there.
Sure I can find it.
Beautiful building. You'll, you'll be envious once you get there and see how, how well that, that's a city hall this way.
Yeah.
The, uh, goal-setting meeting that we had last weekend? Was step one. We're planning step, step two. It was on, you should be on your calendars for next Wednesday. We're framing up the agenda for that, um, looking at a, basically the, kind of the SWOT analysis type thing on a more local level. See if that goes, goes well and everybody can make that. It's been a, been a good effort. Um, the waterfront has, you know, multiple wrongs going as far as this, uh, recent middle of the build application. Talk about that for a second. And that's, these applications are not, um, casual affair. They're requires highly technical debt, you know, specialized transportation debt of crunching to develop these cost estimates. And, uh, most, most importantly is the, uh, the cost, benefit cost ratio, the federal calls it rather than cost benefit. So you will be seeing a proposal that we don't have yet for someone to prepare those, those, um, services for us for the next submittal. And staff is met and we're trying to, you know, maybe I should touch on the debrief from our build grant. We had a, you know, this is our, our second submittal. This year we had a debrief, debrief conference with the grant reviewing agency at, at Federal ODOT last week. And we, our first application was highly recommended. It was in the top, just outside of the top eleven percent that were funded. Unfortunately, we didn't get funded. So we, our recent middle was also highly recommended, but this time they only funded nine percent. There are a few less applications, a lot less money. So I mean, it's just ultra competitive when you figure that one in ten projects are getting, receiving funding even though they're, you know, high, very highly rated. So, you know, in, in that vein, we're trying to be as ultra competitive as possible and we're looking at what it might mean to just take the transportation component, focus this grant on the transportation component while at the same time working with other, there's a couple other sources that we're looking for grant funding that will, um, pull the boardwalk, riverwalk away from the connection of the street from First to Plymouth, focusing on that connection, you know, pure transportation connection. The project being not just terminating at, at the gates where the gate is there, there, but coming up into this area so that you have a, a uniformed street look that goes all the way from the First Street intersection all the way through to Plymouth to give it that major artery.
Yep. It's the, uh, development of the, I can't see this, the, the paper mill waterfront property. Does that development of that as, as we're looking forward to concepts and possibly plans, does that play into the transportation, uh, arena with this, with your, uh, with your grant?
Well, potentially the, the St. Helens Industrial Business Park, another project on a different path. Not looking at federal funding for that necessarily, but it's in lay-in motion. And then we have some sources identified through, um, ODOT and others that potentially help move that project further along once we get closer through this first phase of.
In the waterways as well.
In the waterways, right.
Do we have a kind of a master plan or is it kind of high-grade patchwork that we stick close to each other?
Well, we have the framework plan. And the concept for this industrial business park is in process at the moment. We've done some concept renderings just to have some marketing documents to talk about.
So like our connector plan is a group of patchwork things from the highway theory as compared to a genuinely single idea thing, you know? We have a single idea from Great Cliffs all the way to Scappus, uh, kayaking, that whole slew. And obviously it's fine in the sky, but at least it's a major, general, single plan.
We updated the master waterfront plan in twenty, uh, nine, yeah, twenty oh eight or twenty oh nine, I believe. That was the last update that I know of.
So, so it will be aligned.
Exactly.
All the plants connect. They go up to Gable Road and then it kinda does a little bit of a job to, which would be, um, Mallard Road intersection. We know there's a stoplight coming there. Uh, ODOT has got their own ideas for out there on Bennett Road where you cannot, you will not be able to go out, um, Mo Portland and take a left.
That's not city limits.
You, you will, that's not city limits, but that's bordering on U G B right there. So that's the answer to your question. And Jerry Dimshoe will have all that information if you need it and show you how it connects together. I just wanted to say, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would say that there's.
If you really wanna look at it.
Some places, yes, we have, we have connections that are planned, you know, and they're not well-defined at this point, but there's a desire expressed on the plan that says we wanna connect to, to Scappus and Vernonia Trail kind of things, which, you know, there's a big gap of miles of, you know, nothingness in between or.
Seven or eight, to be exact.
And basically our planning has been in response to the available, they're already funding sources. You know, for the Gateway project, we use state funds for the river. You know, for the Gateway Project, we've used state funds for the River Rock Connector, we've used some, some EPA funds for, uh, for the assessment, and, and, you know, it's-
Donation.
There's nothing that ties them all together, but there's a lot of planning bodies that are, who are well-planned to address certain segments.
So, it's a patchwork.
Okay?
They're nice, well, they're popular.
That's a way cancer grows.
So, related to the grant and any kind of local match and funding, it's been a challenge, you know, as we know, the, the Urban or National Agency isn't performing as well as we would like, largely due to the Armstrong, um, not, not performing as, as anticipated. So, we're looking at re, some financial focus on that right now. We're also going through and inventorying all of these, you know, city assets as far as, um, you know, properties and, um, other grants, bigger reserves, royalties, um, potential loans, low-interest loans available to USDA and others. If we, or when we plan these big pieces of grant, we need to be a match with their progress, so we're coming up with a plan to do that. I think we're, we'll have something pretty well-baked here, um, soon for you to take a look at, but it works, feels right, feels like we got some opportunities.
So, let's move forward, like, we've been talking about what we'll reveal a lot more to as far as projects and stuff like that, right? What you're kinda saying.
That's what we've been working on, and, yes. I think that's it.
So, people know that you're doing a good job, you need to speak louder, more enthusiastic about what's going on in the city. Now, you're moving forward, you're getting a budget mechanism, a funding mechanism set up in order to start moving projects forward, which will allow us to capitalize on grants for matching dollars, or even better than matching dollars, especially if we got the build grant, where we only have three million, uh, twelve million dollar, hopefully, or, or a little bit narrower, cause you're down-scoping it a little bit, and re-looking at the, the build proposal, right? Or is it gonna be about the same dollar amount?
Uh, it's hard, we don't know that quite yet, but the-
The general idea, though.
But the, the, the last year's cycles have been about primarily focused on the River Walk. As the core asset, and then the tr- minimum amount of transportation act improvements, pavement, basically, in part, um, to do, to get that. And, uh, this kind of refocuses it to-
More of the street stuff.
More of the street, that physical artery, and then, and then the River Walk will happen in-
Uh, another phase.
Another phase, that's right.
Yep, okay.
That's it.
Okay. Alright, uh, council reports, should we skip them?
Let's skip them.
Okay, we'll, we'll do them tonight. So, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, we are gonna be going into executive session, I'm gonna take a fifteen-minute break, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting, but we're gonna be going in though-
Who needs to stay?
For S, um, six, uh, one nine two point six six zero two E and H. So, that'll happen in about three forty-five, so we are adjourned.
Do you know who needs to stay, David?
Um, John, who do you want to, do we need anybody to stay, other than Tim? Matt, Matt, I think Matt, you want Matt here? Okay.